Kevin logging on, so does Katie.
She was gonna be here, right? She is, she was, she, she found the link, she's coming right now.
Oh, okay, then we can, alright.
So she should be here in a couple of seconds.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Not the last one today, so.
Yes, win. Alright, common council, pack it. I'm gonna grab my water real quickly, right back.
Katie's coming in right now.
Awesome.
Alright, take a little bit of focus.
We're, since we're, alright, everyone's here, we're ready to go?
Okay.
Alright, I called and ordered the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, February 22nd, at 7:02 PM, we will begin with the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry if I started before the flag came up, it's hard to time things a little bit on these calls. Item three is roll call.
Just take a screenshot and move on.
Alder person, Pauline?
Present.
Alder person, Posey?
Here.
Alder person, Ryan?
Here.
Alder person, Kim?
Yeah.
Alder person, Ricky?
Here.
Alder person, Touche?
Present.
Alder person, Journey?
Here.
Alder person, Cole?
Here.
Mayor Diaz, can you, I, I need to check on Andy, I'm waiting to confirm that we're going, so if you just give me one second, yeah, I wanna run out there real quick if you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thanks, sorry about that.
I think we're on YouTube, I got the, the notice.
We should have Andy just sitting in council chambers for me, or not Andy Adams, sit and run the meeting from there. Get the camera to focus in on the flag, that would solve all that.
We're good, oh, we're good, okay, great. Alright, with that, we'll move on to item four, public comments, do we have any registered speakers, Mr. Sayer?
No, we do not.
Alright, we'll move on to item five, approval of the minutes from the February 8th, 2020, 21, common council. Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky, last chance for corrections. Seeing no hands, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the February 8th, 2021, 2021, common council meetings, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? That motion passes. Next up, under Mayor's business, we have the introduction of the new Verona area school district superintendent. Mr. Sayer, if you would, promote our guest.
Lou. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, how are you? Well, I'm good, how's everyone else?
Great.
Just good to see smiles, you know, without the masks, everything is just smiling with your eyes these days, so I'm glad to see people across the screen smiling today, so if you won't mind, you let me get going, or do you?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, then maybe we can, you know, some questions back and forth, I'm sure there's an altar who has questions, and, you know, bear as fair if you have questions for us.
Absolutely. Well, first, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to, to join you today, I really am just so proud and humbled to be named the next superintendent of Verona area school district, as I've said in multiple articles, I see it as a dream come true, as, as part of an educational journey that's, it's been a few decades now, but it's been built on hard work, and built on a expectation for excellence, and we talk about the image for the Verona area itself, and the expectations for just outstanding outcomes for our students and our families, and, and emerging expectation for equity, those are things that are really drove me to embrace the opportunity when the position became available with the departure of Dean, and what I find has been such a magical fit between my skills, my, my passion, and this belief, this belief that you will see to come fruition, because, and we, this is something I promoted throughout this, this campaign, that Verona area school district will be the national model for excellence grounded in equity, and I'll say it again, I'll say it over and over again, Verona area school district will be the national model for excellence grounded in equity, I know this is just the beginning of what I hope is a long-term partnership with, with you, our council, and, and mayor, you know, hopefully we can get together on multiple occasions, because we know that it takes a community partnership and for us to accomplish our goals, our goals together, we're, we're only as strong as the people that are surrounding us. I'm also gonna just pause for a second and just give a shout out to, to the people that really make this happen, and it's not me, it's our, it's our educators, it's our educators, we have a special, special group of educators, they just work their tails off every, every single day in support of our, support of our students across the country, and it's during the time where unfortunately, they've, they've not been given the amount of respect that they deserve, and they've earned over the years with the, with the hard work that they've done, so I just wanted to give a shout out to our, to our educators out there, let you know that we got somebody that's got your back, we're gonna partner with this together, there will be expectations and accountability, but you're owed to be accountable too, you're owed to be accountable for the things that, that we've committed to, not just in my onboarding process, but in those levels of excellence that are expected, so I'm gonna be brief, I appreciate the opportunity to come today, I'm happy to answer a couple of questions. Also, it's my wife's birthday, so I, I need to do some, I get to do some family time as, as well tonight, as she's celebrating her birthday, so I just wanna give a shout out to her as well, and I see a hand up already, because I think Evan's got that first, that first.
I think, I think Alder Kemp was first, Alder Kemp, then Alder Touche.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Clardy, for being here tonight, I think all of us are excited to have you come on board in the district, I'm actually a graduate of the district, I graduated in 1997, so it's good to have you here, I do have some questions, two questions, one, what, what's your position, at least, you know, I know you're just now getting started, so you might need some time to, to get your feet on the ground, but what's your position with respect to the role of assuming resources officer from the city in the high school, I know a lot of people in the community are concerned about that, I know that this district has done a good job of getting their own people involved in, in security at the high school, but I wanted to get your take on that, and then, more specifically, what do you think we can do as a group to work on improving the communication and the partnership between the city and, and the high school and the districts specifically, it's been just kind of difficult over the last few years, so I'll, I'll leave the floor to you.
Thank you for that, and so as far as a position, it's not as simple as just yes or no, as far as a student resource office, and you say that in every setting that I'm in, again, what I am a proponent of and well ensures that we're safe, and that our students are safe, and they have a safe, a safe environment, and that means both the physical safety and emotional safety, and so, obviously, we do know that there are some times that, there are times where emotional safety is not felt if, if there is not the understanding of, of some past historical practices, or some understanding of some past and current historical practices, and, and understanding of what it means to, to truly partner with, with students, and, and with, and with staff along, along that line, so what my desire would be is for, as we're all working as, as educators, to deepen our understanding about being culturally responsive, as we deepen our understanding of what it means to around restart of practices, and that we do that training and concert with each other, and that we work with each other on, on that, instead of just jumping to the space of, is it flat out yes or no, NSRO will be, will be in the, in the building, and so that's, that's really my stance coming in, obviously, a significant amount of research that has to be done, and planning has to come in as part of my, as part of my transition, but I really just wanted to put my beliefs in the space around what I, what I believe in, and what I want to prioritize, and A is believing in a safe, safe environment, and this belief in that we, we have to do our equity training and work together, so we can all have this similar mindset in how we're supporting our students in, in our, in our buildings and outside our buildings.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Your second question was about long-term partnerships?
Yeah, yeah.
So part of being, being today, I was immediately invited to, to be able to come and meet with you, you are councilman, and our mayor, and I jumped to that right away, because I understand the importance of, of community, community support, and what it, what it really will take for an equal partnership between schools, schools and the community, we're not, you know, we, we're not, we have to work in concert with the, with each other, we have to understand that, you know, there's some things we're gonna agree on, we all have, hopefully, we're all student outcomes at, at the center of what, what we're doing, and what, what we're thinking. Also, I'm not naive enough to know, to know that sometimes we're not gonna agree, and all I ask, and, and you'll hear me say over and over again, let's, if we're gonna disagree, let's disagree with honor. Let's disagree in honor in a, in a way that, you know, we're, we're understanding that there's multiple ways to get to our objectives together, there's multiple ways to to make decisions, and when we disagree, we're, we're gonna do that with honor, we're not going to get into conflicts, or name-calling, or some of the things that have sometimes become societal norms, and I just, I just don't have any space for that in my leadership, and so I'm really looking to work with a council like this that's really, you know, willing to have those tough discussions sometimes, where us walk out together and, and keep our students at the center, when I say students at the center, I mean equity-based approach students at the center, so making sure we're, we're looking at it from that perspective.
Thank you. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mayor Diaz, again, Dr. Clardy, I really appreciate you coming, I'm happily volunteering, Mayor Diaz, to attend every one of your meetings going forward, if he doesn't mind, but I'm joking, of course, but I'm sure he would be happy to attend, and just to give you a little bit of my background, my, all three of my children have gone through the school district, my youngest just graduated last spring, virtually, of course, but what I've been hearing from my neighbors who still have young children in school, and really the questions they're asking me is, when will their kids go back full-time, and I know, given the, the state of COVID, and, and the, and the, you know, kinda questions on vaccines and all this stuff, but it's, I'm really interested in your philosophy, and what, what realistically you think will be, will happen, and all the way from K to 12, you know, what do you think will happen, what, what it will take for kids to be in school full-time?
Yeah, just have to be transparent, that would be, I don't think it would be, it would be disingenuous for me to say I know the answer to that without coming in and looking exactly at what the full Verona community has, has done, I mean, I can give a, a simple answer, give, give claps and all that stuff for, yeah, everybody comes up right now, but I haven't walked in, in, in the, in all the spaces, technically, I have walked in all the spaces, I've visited all the schools, and I've visited classrooms, but even in my current position in, in Madison, we're in a completely different situation, but and so what I, what I like to caution people about is looking at what's happening in one area and comparing to, comparing to the next, I also have a free-form philosophy is that a calendar doesn't dictate a pandemic, human, human behaviors are actually what dictate when this pandemic will, will, will lower, or when numbers get low enough for us to fully be in a space to, to be, to be, to be in school, so it's about prioritizing, you know, all the masking, the, the distance, all those things that we've, that we know for sure are, are mitigation efforts that actually allow for us to, to, to take that next effort, so so to get to the space where I can, like I tell you, a date of when we get there, or I, I just don't think that would be, I, I wouldn't be honest, and I can't, I don't wanna come up, I wouldn't be in a, in a space to, to, to say one way or, or another, so I think the best way is to say, you know, allow the, for the transition to, to happen, let me dig in deeper with the current team around what's, what's gonna take place, and with, with our board to make some very, some very significant decisions, because without that, and then I, I walk in and just make a snap judgment, and put someone at risk, or put families at risk, or put anyone at risk, that's not the type of leadership that Verona area schools expect from me, and I don't think it's the type of leadership you want from, you're, one of the leaders in the Verona area as, as well.
I have Alder Cole and Alder Ricky.
Hi, first I wanna say, yeah, again, thank you, Dr. Clardy, for being here, you're very welcome to our school district, and our city, and our community, and everything, we're so excited to have you, things, I would say, you know, in the past few years have, you know, sometimes have been good, a lot of times have been very strained with the school board and the school administration, so I think we're all looking forward to, you know, fresh set of eyes, you know, fresh breath to come in and help. But I was wondering, you know, you're, speaking of, you know, your equity-based approach, and, which I wholeheartedly support, and I was wondering, well, A, I mean, how the city can help with that, and obviously, that might take more time, you being here, just kinda figuring out how the city can help, also, I mean, assuming that, you know, your approach is going to start, you know, as early as, you know, 4K, going all the way through 12th grade, because I, I just, I know that, you know, just from speaking with the people in the community, and, you know, I have two kids in the district, 5th grade and 8th grade, and it seems like, you know, things start out equity-based, like, you know, wholeheartedly, like, when they're young, middle school, I feel like things kinda get lost and weird, and then high school, and it just seems to get problematic, so I was just really hoping, you know, how, how to build like a good base, and how the city can help with that.
That's a, that's a, that's a great question, I'll begin with how the city can help, the city can help by reaffirming the message of equity in spaces, in, in spaces throughout, throughout the community, we negotiate our conversations, and, and dinner conversations, and home, home conversations, so it's, it's beyond coming from, from school system, and that's not to say that council hasn't spoken about equity, I'm sure, I'm quite sure they have, but I think the more we do it in multiple spaces, that is actually where the grassroots effort takes, takes hold, and you're able to have those conversations throughout, and also, I think it's having a clear understanding of what, when we say equity, what do we mean, and equity means is, is, is not equal, it's what giving, or providing resources to, for what students need to be both emotionally and academically successful in, in our system, so we're talking about equity-based in, in that, in that way. And so I think as we're, we're using common language around what we're referring to, and not allowing it to become, we, we don't want this for it to become a catchphrase, a catchphrase that, that allows for a, a short sense of comfortability without putting the action behind it, and so my, my desires are for us to talk about it, and, and have a deep understanding of when we say equity, this is what we mean, and then work together to develop the action steps, and then we actually do those action steps together, both from the community base and, and from the school base, and have those matriculate through, through our, through our system, every lecture I deal about 4K, and, you know, going K through 1, because we are, we're, 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 our desire is to develop students and children that have that equity mindset, as it matriculates through, through our, through our system, and, and that's our point, and also acknowledge, and we kinda know when momentum stops sometimes, sometimes it stops, I think, research-based, a lot of it stops at, at middle school, and some, sometimes we're into the, into the high school area, so you're right with your, you're at the research there, and we're asking ourselves, why, why are those, that happens, and sometimes we can make assumptions that we've talked about it to this point, and we, and we can stop, or we can pause, and society doesn't really let us pause when it comes to equity work, equity work is, is ongoing all day, every day, about what we're doing, it's our way of existing, so I think moving beyond the dialogue, into actual action steps, and making sure that we are following through with those action steps throughout the, throughout the system, great question, though, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and yeah, let us know, you know, keep us apprised, and let us know through all the steps, how we can help you.
Absolutely.
Alder Ricky?
Thanks, Mayor Diaz, I was just thinking about the anti-racist resolution that the city adopted several months ago now, that involves some training of the, of the city staff and employees, and maybe this would be a good partnership between the city and the school district, to have some of the same trainings offered, you mentioned the police school liaison could, could be in on some of the same trainings that really everyone should undergo to get on the same page with an equity lens, so I was just thinking about that when Alder Cole was speaking, and then what I was thinking of commenting on before was just a note of gratitude for the school district really pushing to get educators vaccinated, because I think that will have a huge impact on when students can go back to school full-time or more time, so I just want to put a plug in to continue doing that beyond this school year, hopefully, you know, we can achieve herd immunity sooner rather than later with teachers, and support staff becoming vaccinated, so I, I just really think that the school district has done a good job of, of getting the word out that educators are important to, to be in the, you know, first groups for that, so thanks.
Absolutely, so, so first, as an educator, myself, I clearly an advocate for vaccinations and, and right promote on myself, but I also want to give credit where credit is due, that, you know, this is the current administrators, administration has really been pushing it from this, and so I never wanna step into a space for, for someone else's work, so I understand what you meant, but, but I also wanna give a shout out to the current administration for their true advocacy, and making, and really working to get educators vaccinated, and let's put it out there, teach, all of our staff, they deserve to be vaccinated, it's not a favor, like, as I, we, they deserve for that, that to happen, because, you know, we're asking them to work with, with staff, or all of us to work with staff, so I just wanted to first say thank you for acknowledging that, but also give a shout out to the current administration for that work.
Definitely, yes, and I did send an email thanking them too, so.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? I'll just say, I, I just really appreciate you noting educators, because, you know, my son's in the Verona school system, and we've liked all three of his teachers, or he's had multiple teachers, and I think they've been really great, and ultimately, you know, teachers are the foundation of any, any school, I think that's great, I also, I also think it's great that you mentioned that it's inevitable, we'll probably disagree, because I think, you know, it's just the nature of, of working with different people, working, you know, with different governing bodies, I think, I think it's, if we go in saying, you know, respectful of each other, and we'll work well together, and we all have the same goals, because, you know, when the schools succeed, that means the city's succeeding too, so I think, you know, I think, I think that's a really, really good attitude to have, and I, and I also, I guess I would say, I, I think the ambition for being a national model is good too, because we should, you know, Verona's a great city, this whole school district's a great, bunch of great cities, so like, why not, you know, aim to be the best?
Absolutely.
Do you have any questions for us, I guess, or any things we can do to help, you know, equity or anything, really?
Really, the questions today really helped me understand that we're, we're already pretty well aligned in a lot of our thinking already, and I think it's just how we partner together to get there. I, I truly appreciate that there's already been an anti-racist resolution, because we just know, you know, not being racist itself is not good enough, we, we are asking for us to be anti, anti-racist, and what that means for our full culture, and for, for our full, full society, I'm also appreciative in knowing that the, that Verona carries a wide, you know, not just in boundaries, but in, in demographic, and wants and needs, and and culture, and, and I've committed myself to being a leader to all, to all those, whether we agree or disagree, I want to know and understand perspectives, so I can make the best leadership moves and action steps based on the best leadership moves and action steps based off the perspectives representing across our, our demographics and committed to that. So I know our partnership will be strong. I, you know, this is a great start, and it's maybe fifteen, twenty minutes of, hours and hopefully a year of, of partnership together. And I really see that really come to life as early as April, when I'm able to fully come in and work side by side with Dean in completing the transition, and then take me fully over, and at the end of June and beginning of July. So I'm really, really thankful for the opportunity to come today and speak. Hopefully, I get invited as much as possible. You're always welcome at VSD, any scenario that we're in, just, just open invite for us to sit and talk. And I hope we get to the space where we can, you know, pass each other, see each other in the community. My family is so excited to be able to move to the Verona area together and just be a part of the community. I don't, you're seeing me in multiple spaces, multiple events, and that's what, that's what we're about. And we're, we're a family of educators, so that's what we, that's what we love. So if I'm not holding up to some level of expectation as you want, call me up, tell me, email me, just let me know. And I don't think that's going to be a problem. And that, but we're going to have some, we're going to have some great conversations. And I hope I help self to a very, very high level, very, very high level of accountability and expectation for myself, because I, I do it for others. So I never mind the feedback, and I know I can't do this without you. So thank you again. And if you ever need me, I'm email, text, or call away.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
With that, that concludes mayor's business. We will move on to item seven announcements. Does anyone from the council have any announcements? Seeing no hands, we move on to item eight, the administrator's report. Mr. Sager.
Thank you for updates tonight. We do have a joint review board meeting tomorrow. That's with all the taxing entities, and that's regards to creation of TID, or expansion of TID District number nine. On Wednesday, there is a joint city-town planning meeting. And then on Thursday, at six o'clock, there is a open house meeting to get feedback on the future public park on the former Sure Creek New Century School property. And all those meetings will be held on Zoom. We have planning commission meeting on March first, and then this is a ways in the future, but we're planning on having the, we will have the organizational meeting on April 20. The plan right now is at 6:00 PM. So if that does not work for people as we get closer to the date, let me know. We can, we can move that. But right now, we're shooting for 6:00 PM. Active public hearings that we have right now is we have a public hearing for the Costco PIP, a public hearing for the hop house patio, we're looking at permanent patio in front of the building, Prairie Oaks general development plan for apartment, two apartment buildings, TID District number nine. And then finally, we have a public hearing planned on an amendment to our subdivision ordinance relating to street names. We did have an election on February 16. The only item on that agenda was the state superintendent of public construction. A total of 990 people voted in the city, of which 568 people voted absentee, and 422 people voted in person at the polls. And then finally, we continue to recruit for the city clerk position. We've actually extended that deadline until March first. We're looking for additional qualified applicants. I'm working with the human resources coordinator on that recruitment, and we'll begin our first review of those applications on March first. So hopefully that we will receive, hopefully, we receive additional qualified applicants for that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Alder.
Adam, what were the qualifications that were tweaked or added that you weren't seeing in candidates that had applied?
Sure. So the big change that we made to this was, the previous posting had the requirement of a bachelor's degree for this position, and we've changed that now to a high school diploma. And the reason for that is, that's how it used to be until 2015. And in 2015, we made a change to have a bachelor's as a requirement. In speaking to other clerks, the reality is, the clerk is a, is kind of an ancient position in the state. It's been around since the dawn of the state itself. And there are many clerks in the state of Wisconsin that don't have a bachelor's degree, but obviously have a high school diploma. And we felt changing that requirement would expand the pool. I think also, as we looked at other position descriptions of other places, a lot of places, larger communities than us, actually only had a high school diploma as qualification for that as well. So our thought process was trying to expand the pool from what we received, and hopefully that will get us a broader range of qualified applicants.
Thank you.
Alder Cole.
Is it high school diploma only, or a high school diploma or equivalent?
I'd say equivalent, yeah. When I say high school, it's, yeah, it's, it's the high school equivalent to GED. I think we also added as well requiring some government experience as well, too. We've had, we had a lot of applicants that didn't have that. And that's one of the keys to this, is we need someone who has experience coming in. This is the head clerk. We need someone who's done it before. So that was something else we tweaked in that as well, too.
Other questions for Mr. Sager? Seeing no hands, we will move on to item nine, engineer's report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the Eastside Interceptor, there have been no changes to the traffic control out there. So Bruce Street is currently open to traffic, but it will be closed again in the spring to complete permanent roadway construction and restoration. And the Ice Age Trail is detoured to South Main Street to Military Ridge State Trail. For the tunneling, tunneling and pounding operations are continuing to progress under South Main Street. The interceptor sewer casing and pipe has been completed. Crews are moving to the forest main crossing and beginning tunneling operations. This will take about a month or so to complete. A mailing was sent to adjacent properties in mid-December. Gravity sewer has been completed south of South, South Main Street. Crews are currently installing gravity sewer north of South, South Main Street and working in the Badger Mill Creek horseshoe area. This work is anticipated to last a couple of weeks. Crews will then resume MMSD forest main installation. They will first complete the remaining portion south of South Main Street. Next, they will complete the segment north of South Main Street through the Badger Mill Creek horseshoe area. Finally, when the tunneling is completed on our main street, the forest main will be connected to previously placed forest main. Dewatering and pipe preparation operations are planned ahead of pipe installations from the Badger Mill Creek horseshoe area to the Lincoln Street Bridge area. For the neighborhood progress meetings, the second neighborhood progress meeting was held on February 17 by project staff and was attended by 14 people. And the next neighborhood progress meeting will be held on March 17 by project staff. And there's a Zoom link for the meeting on the project website. For major design projects, the Lincoln Street Strohwater Facility Design, the project is currently out to bid with a bid opening scheduled on February 24. The public information meeting for the project is scheduled for February 24 at 5:30 PM via Zoom. A mailing was sent out to adjacent property owners the week of February 5, notifying them of the public information meeting. A front page article appeared in the February 11 edition of the Verona Press. The headline was Pond of a Different Magnitude. A mandatory, a mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on February 16. Representatives from eight different contractors attended the meeting. For the North Main Street Water Main Replacement Design, the project is also currently activated with a bid opening scheduled for February 24. Construction is set to occur in mid-June to mid-August. The date of the virtual public information meeting is March 3. The meeting link is on the project website. Also, as the project nears the start of construction, project staff will engage the Verona Press to release an article on the project. For the Badger Mill Creek Restoration Design, Mr. Walker and Mr. Jacobson met virtually with Trout Unlimited on February 4 to discuss the project and what input and/or assistance that they can provide. Mr. Jacobson had a kickoff meeting with the design consultant on February 8. Mr. Jacobson and the design consultant met with Wisconsin DNR staff on February 18 to discuss the project goals, challenges, permit requirements, and what the DNR envisions for the stream, and that can be incorporated into the design. Next steps are to take the information from the above meetings and prepare preliminary plans. Once preliminary plans are prepared, staff will post information on a project website. The public will be able to provide comments on the preliminary plans. Updates on this project will be provided at the monthly neighborhood meetings for the Interceptor project. For the County Highway M slash County Highway PB Intersection Design, the design consultant has been engaged by project staff to commence with the engineering plans. Field survey has been substantially completed. And there are four in-house design projects, the Asphalt Street Rehabilitation Project, Pavement Surface Treatment Project, Concrete Street Rehabilitation Project, and Pavement Marking Project. Those have been discussed at previous meetings. Those are all currently out to bid with bid openings scheduled on February 24. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the engineer's report? Seeing no hands, we will move on to item 10, the committee reports. First up, we have finance committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of $17,448,938.22.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey. Alder Kemp?
Yes, for the sake of discussion and explanation, first, we have two payments to Dane County Treasure and to the Madison Area Technical College for the February tax settlement in the amounts of 283,000, excuse me, $2,883,283.53, and $869,60.39 respectively. We have payments to the Verona Area School District in the amount of $12,953,743.05 for the February tax settlement. Payment to Alliant Energy for our monthly service in the amount of $39,622.76. Payments, a partial truck, partial payment for a patrol truck to Burke Truck and Equipment for $46,911. We also have our payment for County Truck, County Highway M to the City of Madison in the amount of $369,313.99. And we finally have municipal property insurance payments for our 2021 property insurance policy in the amount of
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of paying the bills in the non-specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the next item, finance committee. Alder Kemp.
Yes, I'm going to make a motion regarding resolution number 21-006, approving a tax increment district for affordable housing extension.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Kemp?
Yes, again, I'll take a stab at it, and Adam may want to add some color, but essentially, we are at a point now where TID District 6 could close by statute. And so we have an opportunity before that closing to essentially put some money aside for affordable housing. I think in committee, at the committee level, we discussed it. We think that this is a good idea for the city at this point, because we don't necessarily have to predetermine where those funds are going to go. But they can go towards affordable housing, which is something that we are really trying to work on improving in Verona. The cost of living here is, is pretty expensive, and we have had conversations about how can we improve workforce housing. So at the committee level, we approved it to come to the council, and we think it's certainly a good idea. At this time, I would like Adam to add any color as he sees fit.
This is for TID District number six. This is for the Liberty Park Verona Technology District. And what we're doing is looking at pulling the district open one year, and this is allowed by statute, but holding it open for one year. And then we would continue to collect tax payments in 2022 for the 2021 year. And those payments would be available for potential, you know, affordable housing in 2023. And the dollar amount that we're looking at here for this kind of affordable housing fund would be approximately $1.6 million. By statute, we have to use at least 75% of that, those dollars towards affordable housing, and the other portion could be used to improve housing stock. And one of the questions at the committee was, what does that improved housing stock mean? And some places have provided grants, provided loans to improve kind of the existing houses, or, as the question was in the committee, potentially existing multifamily buildings that include like paint, new siding. I think from a staff perspective, you know, we've talked about affordable housing before. We have obviously a large project in the former New Century Sure Creek School site that has affordable housing. You know, as a way of, you could use these funds instead of tiffing a property, these funds would be available to be used kind of outside of creative TIF districts. So as, as Alder Kemp said, you don't have to decide how these are being used. You just have to adopt the resolution before April to indicate the state that you're, you're going to hold the district open. If you don't adopt this, in essence, the district does have the ability to close. So we've come back with a closure resolution in the near future as well, if you choose not to adopt this.
Thank you. Alder Tushay.
Thank you. So if this is going to come out of TIF District 6, does that mean those funds are then tied to TIF, TIFT, TIF District 6? Man, hard time today.
No, they're not. So once, what, what the statute says is, basically, this money will go into a pot that has to be used for, you know, affordable housing. So 75% of these funds would have to be used for affordable housing. You can use 100% if you chose to, but no, it could be allocated anywhere in, in, in the city. If you had a project that was hypothetically on the north side of town, and the districts are on the south side of town, it, it doesn't matter, as long as it's going towards that purpose of what the statute allows it to be. So the money would not be tied back to that TIF district.
So, so the way I understand it, we would extend the TIFT district even though it's ready to be closed. So that also means those tax dollars, instead of going towards Dane County, the school district, Madison Colleges, would go into a fund of our choosing to spend towards affordable housing. Is that right?
Correct.
I just feel like we're robbing from these other districts. I mean, honestly, especially after watching my property taxes go up significantly this year, and everyone raising their taxes on us, it just feels like we're, it feels like a misallocation for that reason. You know, if the city's serious about it, we should pull it out of city taxes, pull it out of our own funds, and not take it from the school, not take it from the county, and the various other taxing entities. So as much as I'm for making these things appropriate, it's our decision, it should be our money, not their money. And I don't think this is the right thing to do. It feels morally wrong. You know, it's fine, great clever trick, but man, the, the, yeah, we're just going to take, keep you guys from getting this tax money, be able to use it towards your own decisions, your own plans, and we're going to take it from you and use it for something else. Doesn't seem right. I'm done.
Mr. Sager, I just want to clarify one quick thing. So you said allowed by state statute. Is it, is it allowed specifically by state statute, or is it just, I guess, could you give a little background on that?
It's allowed by, I think the resolution has the number in it, but it's allowed by 661105, print 6, print G. It's been around for, it was around even when we closed the Epic TIF. I know that. I'm not sure how long it's been around, but it's been around for some years now. You know, it's utilized by a lot of communities. Pittsburgh is using it. Wannakee right now is going through a similar process as well. It's been used kind of over, all over the state, but it's, it's allowed explicitly by that statute provision. That's the second kind of whereas clause in that resolution.
Thank you for the clarification. Other questions or comment? Alder Kemp?
Yeah, I, I can, I can see what Evan is, is saying. I think if we have an opportunity to do something like this, we can do both, right? If, if we wanted to do what Evan's suggesting, we could do that, and still also have these funds to make it even more effective. I don't know, I mean, I kind of looking at, I'm looking at it from strictly just, I understand what he's saying, but I'm looking at it strictly from statutory perspective. If the law allows us to do it, and we can do, have the opportunity to provide this, perhaps for, for improved housing projects, I see no reason why we shouldn't. That doesn't mean that the city can't go ahead and do what Evan is suggesting. I think that that may be another alternate idea as well. That just gets us to our goal faster. If our goal is to actually help people have workforce housing in Verona, this is just one tool we, or mechanism that we could use. housing in Verona, this is just one tool or mechanism that we could use, and it's, this is just it. Once it closes, it's done, we don't have that opportunity anymore. That's the key. So I can see Evan has his hands up. You know, I could probably go back and forth all night. I don't, we can do that some other time, but.
Alder Touche and then Alder Reiki?
Thank you. You know, again, it's, just flip the coin. The county says, hey, you know, we're going to keep you from getting your tax increment from this area, and we're going to do something else of our choosing with it. I mean, that's essentially what we're doing. And honestly, I struggle with all of this, but just taking tax increment from, like, let's, I mean, who knows? Maybe the school district's like, yeah, can't wait for that TIF 6 district to diffuse so we can get a chunk of money to do whatever they plan on doing, you know? More virtual stuff because of COVID, whatever they have plans for. We've now postponed and changed our plans because we feel like we're more important. And that, I guess that's my real struggle. I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it as a city, not just do it by taking revenue from these other tax entities. So I'm going to vote against it just because it just feels wrong taking from someone else. Thank you.
Alder Reiki?
I'm just wondering if it would feel better if we had it earmarked for some particular project, and if we could have some time to decide on that by voting in favor of this tonight, and then if we don't come up with something that's worthy enough, according to all of us, then can we give it back, essentially? Like, what's the timeline, I guess, is a question. And can, you know, if we vote yes on this, does that mean that it's an opportunity still, but we don't have to use the money?
Mr. Sayer?
If you adopt the resolution, what you're doing is telling the state that you're going to hold the district open that additional year and use those dollars for affordable housing. I don't know if midway through that, say, next year at some point, you go, nah, we don't really want to do that, we've changed your mind. I don't know what the process for that would be. You know, I think if you have a desire to, thinking you might have a project in, you know, or dollars or an idea of how this might be used, I think, you know, you need to adopt this before April of this year. That's required by statute, so you don't have to adopt it by tonight, but would most likely come back at the next meeting for potential action on it. You're obviously not going to be able to identify a project between now and before April because these projects are, you know, you're not going to get the money until 2023. That's when you're going to be able to finish kind of that money. So, you know, I think if you're looking at creating a potential fund for use of, for affordable housing, if you're looking at creating, you know, providing some money for potential housing rehabilitation, this is obviously a tool, a mechanism that you can utilize. You don't have to, by many means. It kind of goes back to old person Touche's point of, you can just simply say, the district's done well, it's closing ahead of time, we're in a position to close it, and then you close it. And you close the district, no different than we did for the last one, for the Epic TIF, and there's some residual dollars in there. They're not much, but you could take those city residual dollars and start a substantially smaller fund with those dollars and close the district a year before and not, and not close it and kind of delay that. But this, obviously, if you do decide to do it, it creates a significant amount of money of, you know, at one point, approximately 1.6 million dollars that, you know, we, for the, for the, you know, Steve Brown Alexander project, there's a significant TIF incentive associated with that, that you could look at that, and maybe in the future, you don't have to provide that incentive through a TIF district. You have that money actually set aside, and you could provide that potentially anywhere in the city or where you kind of, you know, combine that money with Dane County housing money or lead funds as well. There's ways you could look at that, too. So like I said, you're not, you're not required to do this. It's an option that is available and a tool that you don't need to identify the projects right now. You just need to identify, yes, we're going to do that, or no, we're not going to. And if, and if you want clarification on, can you change your mind in the future? That's something I'd have to look into. I wasn't prepared for that question, to be honest.
Alder Ryan, I believe, you had your hand up?
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Sayer answered one of my questions, which was around the date and whether or not we could defer a vote to a future meeting prior to April. So that was answered. Thank you. I guess my next question is, what happens to the funds should we vote against? And are we, yeah, what happens to those funds?
Basically, if you don't approve it, we're going to come back with a resolution just to close the district. So we're going to come back. Either way, if you don't approve this, we're going to come back with a resolution, the council saying, hey, the district's in a position to be closed. We need to adopt basically a formality of a resolution saying, letting the state know, we've got enough money to cover our expenses, the district is in a position to close. We'll then submit that for closure, and at that point, the residuals at a certain date, I believe next year, we get paid out to the taxing jurisdictions. There'd be a payment to the city, Dane County, the school district, and then the college, Madison College. And at that point, you know, once the district closes, it obviously goes back in the tax rolls and it's no longer in that special kind of taxing jurisdiction.
So, follow-up question. And pardon me if I'm asking dumb questions, but we were given funds by the state to allocate to our best discretion, and we did better than expected, and we've got funds now that exist that, should we give them back to the state? The state will decide what happens with it. Is that how this works?
No. No. So in essence, when we created TIF District, we dropped this overlay district on top of it, which establishes a base value to it. So any new increment generated, any new, any new tax dollars generated in that go to that actual tax, the TIF district itself. Those don't go back into the general tax rolls or on the levy. It stays within the district. And as part of that TIF district, we're able to do certain projects in there. So we have what's called a TIF project plan, where there'll be public infrastructure improvements. It might be a waterline extension. It might be a, might be, well, for example, you've got the TID 8 one, which has the traffic signals for the TIF district and the technology park. Basically, the tax dollars in that district are being generated and then being kind of used to provide for those infrastructure and utility purposes. So the ultimate authority kind of lies with the council on this item. The creation of the TIF districts, actually, that starts with the Jiant Review Board, which is, you know, there's a meeting tomorrow on that one for TIF District Number 9. But the taxing jurisdictions are the ones who actually sign off on the creation of the TIF districts. And the reason for that kind of goes kind of slightly to Evan, Alder Touche's point is, they're in essence signing off on saying, we're not going to get any tax dollars from these lands until the district closes. That's in essence of what they're signing off on. They're signing off on typically about a 23-year, 27-year deal where they're acknowledging, okay, these lands are blighted, or these lands are, need some improvements, and we're going to kind of say, okay, we're not going to get any tax dollars off of this until that TIF district closes. And once that district closes, the increment that's been created in that district then goes back to those taxing jurisdictions, and those are put on the tax roll. So instead of those tax dollars going into the district, they're then filed as a kind of general item in the actual levy itself. So the city has full discretion on this item, but the actual creation of the district, that falls back onto the four taxing jurisdictions, one of which is the city. Does that answer it?
Does. Thank you.
Alder Touche and then myself.
You know, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong on some of this, but you know, the intent of a TIF district is to take something, as you said, blighted, and make it better. And it's a tool for us as a city to create value where there wasn't value. So if it was, that land was generating 100,000 dollars in taxes, the city says, hey, we're going to open this TIF district, and it's going to, we're going to, we believe we're going to generate this month, you know, a million dollars in tax revenue. We're going to take that extra million dollars, which really is 900,000 dollars, and we're going to use that to develop that area. So, you know, Ranky Project, Livisit, both of those are in a TIF district, and we've used it to entice developers or businesses to come in, which is also benefits the city by giving us jobs, increases the value of the land, but we have to use that money to put roads in, traffic lights, all these things. We are building something from essentially that was just farm fields in this case. At the end of that TIF district, when we close it, all of a sudden, that 100,000 dollars that they've been getting for however many years that we've had it locked in, jumps to that million dollars. That's huge. You know, the reality is, is our high school, our brand-new high school came from the Epic TIF, a big chunk of it. You know, it's when Epic opened their TIF district and they borrowed money from essentially future taxes, they were able to do what they were able to do, and super-successful company, land value went through the roof. The value of the properties went through the roof, so when it diffused, giant chunk of money showed up in everyone's pockets, the city's pockets, the school's pockets, the county's pockets, and they were able to do things with it. I think a large part of our fire station is from that effort. You know, the high school, big chunk of that is from Epic. Same thing for other districts. I mean, these entities, you know, we are basically saying, you can't make any more money off of this land, you know, very tax entities, until this diffuses. So delaying it isn't fair. Taking that money and putting it somewhere else for some other purpose isn't fair. And that's the point I'm trying to make, is just, even though the law says we can do it, it still doesn't make it right. Thank you.
I have myself and then Alder Kemp. Yeah, I just want to say a few things. You know, I think, well, in general, I have my own criticisms of TIF policy. I think sometimes it gets abused. I mean, the theory is, as we've all talked about, is that if it wasn't for TIF, the development wouldn't happen. So for example, on West Front Avenue, where there's a contaminated site, if there was no TIF, it's not going to happen because it's contaminated, and we've had projects coming for the city without TIF, and as soon as the companies do due diligence on the property, they basically never hear from them again. Because it, you know, it's, unfortunately, it's one of those things, the people responsible for the contamination are long gone, and now the property's just kind of tainted. And so like, using it there, using it to help bring in jobs to the city, to help develop our downtown, to build affordable housing, I think are all really good. But sometimes in other, maybe not so much in Verona, but in other communities, TIF can get abused to the point where developers just expect it. And so I think sometimes it's not used as well. So I have my own criticisms of TIF, even though I've supported TIF projects and I think they're good for the city. But as part of TIF, one of the things that is allowed for is affordable housing, because throughout the state, there's a need for affordable housing, including in communities like Verona. You know, so to me, we've used TIF to help create a, or we, people in general have been in favor of using TIF to create affordable housing. I have. And this is another case of using TIF to create affordable housing. I think this is a good use of the TIF, the TIF district, because ultimately, I believe people who work in Verona deserve a chance to live in Verona. And right now, there's people, even some people who work at the school district, and even the city and other, and other places, who are good enough to work in our city, but financially are not necessarily good enough to live in our city. I don't think that's right. I think there's just, there's some very scary things going on with the housing market. I think it's beyond any of our abilities to solve, and, you know, even beyond our community. If you look out in California, in New York, and places, it's just, I would describe as semi-catastrophic. But happily, we don't have to solve all that, but what we can do in our community is mitigate it. And I believe that, you know, using this TIF district, which is doing very well, and we're just on track to close early anyway, is a way to benefit our community, which will benefit all the other jurisdictions. And ultimately, I think it's in line with what TIF is designed to be used for, and it's something I support. So I hope people do support the creation of this fund, because I think we will absolutely put it to use, and I think it will benefit. Alder Kemp?
I was essentially going to say what you did, but maybe a bit more succinctly, that's all.
Other questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Sayer?
Just don't take a roll call vote.
There's a roll call vote? Okay.
Required, yes, it's required. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, this will be a roll call vote regarding Resolution Number 21-006, approving a tax increment district, TID affordable housing extension. Mr. Sayer, if you'd read the roll?
Alder Person Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Person Journey?
Aye.
Alder Person Touche?
No.
Alder Person Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Person Ryan?
Aye.
Alder Person Cole?
Aye.
Alder Person Reiki?
Aye.
Alder Person Posey?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Anything further from Finance?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10B, Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Reiki?
Thank you. I make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 21-973, amending Section 10-1-12 of the Code of Ordinances, reducing the speed limit on Wayland Road.
Motion, Alder Reiki, second by Alder Touche. Alder Reiki?
The proposed ordinance amendment will reduce the speed limit on Wayland Road between Old County Highway PB and Liberty Drive to 25 miles per hour. The speed limit east of Liberty Drive to a point 1,315 feet east will be 35 miles per hour. The speed limit east of that point will be 45 miles per hour. Wayland Road has shared jurisdiction with the town of Verona, and tentatively, the town will change the speed limits to match the city's changes on March 2nd.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this ordinance, or proposed ordinance, Section 6? Seeing no hands? All those in favor of Ordinance Number 21-973, amending Section 10-1-12 of the Code of Ordinances, reducing the speed limit on Wayland Road, say aye.
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 Close, no? And that motion passes. Alder Reiki?
Make a motion to approve an application for a combination Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverages license from N+1 Coffee and Beer Bar LLC, Doing Businesses N+1 Coffee and Beer, 507 Bruce Street, Suite 101, Verona, Wisconsin, 53593, Jessica Loffenberg Agent.
Motion by Alder Reiki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey. Alder Reiki?
N+1 Coffee and Beer Bar LLC currently carries Class B fermented malt beverage and Class C wine licenses. If this application is approved, the Class C wine license will be replaced by a Class B intoxicating liquor license, which will allow for the service of any intoxicating liquor versus wine only. The current licenses will be surrendered to the city before the new licenses will be issued.
You've heard the explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of approving the application for a combination Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverages license from N+1 Coffee and Beer Bar LLC, Doing Businesses N+1 Coffee and Beer, 507 Bruce Street, Suite 101, Verona, Wisconsin, 53593, with Jessica Loffenberg as agent, say aye.
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 Close, no? And that motion passes. Alder Reiki?
Make a motion to approve a liquor license premise amendment for N+1 Coffee and Beer Bar located at 507 Bruce Street with the following conditions: The outdoor patio fencing shall be a minimum of 48 inches tall. Alcohol consumption shall be limited to the fenced area around the outdoor patio or inside the building. All areas where alcohol is consumed shall be monitored by staff. The fence and gate for the outdoor patio shall comply with the requirements from the Police Department and Building Inspector. The exit for the patio shall be labeled as an exit only. The use of the outdoor seating area is permitted to operate from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days per week, and the applicant shall obtain all necessary alcohol licenses, licensees, and operate in conformance to the requirements of the licensees.
Motion by Alder Reiki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey. Alder Reiki?
This property already has a 16-by-50-foot concrete patio. The applicant will be adding an enclosed fencing, an entry area. The fencing would begin from the left side of the entry door to the café if looking at the building. There would be a one-way swinging door to enter the fenced patio area. On the opposite end of the fenced patio area or east side, there would be a second one-way swinging door for emergency exit. Video monitoring of the patio area would be set up in four locations. A conditional use per A conditional use permit was approved for the premise area in 2018, and the conditions from the 2018 conditional use permit were those that I read.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor of approving the liquor license premise amendment for N+1 Coffee and Beer Bar located at 507 Brew Street, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from public safety?
No, that is all.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10C, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve Change Order Number 1, Project ID 2018-108, East Side Interceptor Replacement.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ryan. Alder Touche?
Thank you. This change order is for the East Side Interceptor Project and is for the reduction of work associated with Project B. Project B is all Dane County-prepared and financed work. Dane County staff has reviewed and signed the change order per the Intergovernmental Agreement. The City of Verona is the lead on the project and the owner of the contract, thus it's in far plus. The reduction, this change order is for the reduction of invasive species removal in the area within the project limits, and a change in unit price due to density of work zones and level of effort. The original contract was for $7,761,804.60, with a reduction of $31,620, which will bring the total contract value, as of this item, at $7,730,184.60. To add that, I did kind of dig into this a little bit more during the meeting. In essence, after the majority of the clearing was done, Dane County went back and looked at the remaining clearing that was necessary, they had put it within their project, and determined that the density of invasive species was not as bad as they thought, and decided during the rehabilitation of this project, there are opportunities to remove more invasive species less dramatically than what has already happened. Thank you.
Thank you, and good to hear. Any questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no hands? All those in favor of approving Change Order Number 1 for Project ID 2018-108, East Side Interceptor Replacement, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10C2, I make a motion to approve Change Order Number 2 for Project ID 2018-108, East Side Interceptor Replacement.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche?
This one's not as fun as the last one. Change Order Number 2 is for, again, for this project, for additional work that was required to facilitate construction of the sanitary sewer in Brew Street, remobilization for clearing operations, and additional erosion control, and best management practices to be used throughout construction. The work changes followed: A window in an existing 12-inch water main over the proposed forest main. The water main ended up being deeper than it was originally anticipated based on records in the area. Work also included added a 12-inch valve. And a window, what a window is essentially is they're taking the straight pipe and they're making it go up, over, and back down, back in that straight line. So quite a bit of work there. They also replaced a 34-inch-by-53-inch stormwater sewer apron and wall. The existing wall was already part of the effort, and the contractor knew they needed to do the work. Unfortunately, the wall was damaged. So this covers the materials of the wall, but the contractor's eating the labor on their own. Additional erosion control measures will be used in the field, and anticipated planned erosion control measures included in the bid. It also provides field staff more resources to be used to ensure proper site conditions. And lastly, the remobilization and demobilization of clearing and grubbing equipment for the land just north of South Main Street that was not acquired until January. So it's a little late for this project, so moving that equipment around is actually costing us money. The current awarded contract value from the item above is at $7,761,804.60. This is going to add $37,925, bringing the total value, oops, I read this wrong, the D-Duck is included in there, so ignore that first value. The add is $37,925, and the new total will be $7,768,109.60.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on Change Order Number 2? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of Change Order Number 2 for Project ID 2018-108, East Side Interceptor Replacement, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10C3, I make a motion to approve Resolution R-21-007, Accepting Public Improvements Adjacent to Verona Area High School.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ryan. Alder Touche?
Thank you. The public improvements have been substantially completed as of the September 24th last year. We had some punch list items that were addressed, and staff recommends to the city that we accept the newly constructed portions of the streets and intersections. These streets are Stewart's Woods Road and the bridge, Wildcat Way and the bridge, West Verona Avenue between East and Circle and Nine Mound, West Ridge Parkway Sidewalk, Nine Mound. Basically, if I were to summarize it, because I'm not going to read here every street from now on, but all the work done for the new high school, all the public roads and sidewalks and so on. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this resolution? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number R-21-007, Accepting Public Improvements Adjacent to Verona Area High School, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
That is all for tonight.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10D, the Sustainability Task Force. Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-008, Establishing the City Designee to Comment on Dockets Before the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin.
Motion by Alder Ryan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposed resolution would allow the mayor to comment on dockets before the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin, or PSC. This will allow comments to be submitted to the PSC without calling special meetings for the common council to discuss the city's position on dockets before the PSC. By approving the resolution, the mayor can file public comments on behalf of the city in support of renewable energy projects and other dockets before the PSC that further the goals of the 2019 Sustainability Resolution. The Sustainability Task Force discussed the resolution on February 15, 2021, and voted five to nothing to recommend approval.
Questions or comments on this motion? Alder Touche?
I just want to make sure I understand this. So, and I'm probably repeating some of what was already said. So instead of calling Sustainability Task Force and Luke, you reviewing with them what you were, the comment, you're just skipping them, is that correct?
Yeah. Part of this was, is, I talked to the sustainability person for the county, and they have some sort of resolutions kind of on file, and they have staff, you know, basically submit comments on the county's behalf if they're in line with previous resolutions. The issue here is we're kind of, and Mr. Sayer can jump in, but we're kind of short-staffed at the city level, and so, well, I think the Sustainability Task Force wanted the city to weigh in on some of these things. We also have to be mindful of staff's time, and it was something that I just felt like I'm interested in and would volunteer to do. Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, ultimately, the council's the one who has the final authority, so the task force doesn't really have the authority to comment. If they saw something on there, they could tell the staff, and we could put it on a future meeting. But the intent of this is not every single one of these items out there that if there's a desire to comment on, that we have to bring back every single time to the council, and then, basically, we're cluttering on the agendas with support items. So the thought process is giving the mayor the authority to kind of go out and use his discretion that are within lines of the city goals to kind of comment on these, on the city's behalf. So hopefully to cut down on meetings as well, that was part of the goal, too.
Alder Touche?
I get the efficiency of all of that. My only concern is, and I look to our national politics, where Congress has given our president a lot of power, I feel like we are giving up our opportunity to add to that voice by doing this. I don't have doubts that Luke will represent us well. That doesn't speak to future mayors. And I would either, I'd be interested in this to have a moratorium or some process for us to pull our authority back to add comments, because I think, I think as a body, we represent the city, and Luke, being the leader of, the elected leader of the city, is a good representative. I think the rest of us help fill in any gaps, and I would just hate for us to give up our opportunity to have a voice. So I'm fine tweaking this in some way that still, it can be an email communication, it can be some sort of request that, hey, I'm going to be presenting this, if anyone has, anyone on the council has a concern, I can pause my comment and bring it to the council for your approval. Something that does, doesn't, keeps it efficient, yet we don't give up too much of our authority. Thank you.
Mr. Sayer, do you have your hand up for?
Yeah, that was one of the comments that came out of the task force, was the concern that your reasoning, that we're just, for example, if a different mayor came in, he or she had a different philosophy, or a completely opposite philosophy of the council, I mean, one of the options, you could come back and hold the authority pretty quick. I mean, it's ultimately, you have the full ability to do that. If someone didn't want, you know, the mayor speaking at some point, you could hold the authority for his or her going to comment on that. The one challenge by email, I will just say, is that potentially opens up open meetings, just because if you're directing someone and commenting on it through email, that's the only concern with that, is it has the potential, I'm not saying it's going to, but it has the potential that it could create a potential meetings issue unintentionally. Yes, you are giving up some discretion as part of this, I will say that, and you are sacrificing that discretion for efficiency, is the point.
Well, so the resolutions are controlled by the mayor. You set the agenda. If, you know, Luke, you're a benevolent mayor, over many years, right? But the next one that comes in may not be. And because the mayor sets the agenda, there is no opportunity for a resolution to reverse this. So, I mean, just thinking through the mechanics of what it takes to, like, have a council disagree, as much as I'm in favor of certainly keeping things efficient, I'm just not comfortable giving up the power that we have.
I guess, sorry.
No, I'm open to a little more creative ideas on how to, I would say, keep things efficient, provide an opportunity for the council to discuss, but if nobody on the council side has any objections through whatever method, I mean, even those email communications, Adam, we've talked about this, you blind-CC all the members, it makes it really hard to have a quorum when you hit reply to all and you only get the original sender on it. There are technological ways to reduce the opportunities for those kind of conversations. So I'm just, maybe we just put a pause in this till the next meeting, till something a little more creative is put out.
Alder Ryan and then myself.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, we sort of had this conversation in the task force as well, and I guess I don't personally see a large issue, I think, worst-case, you know, generally speaking, I think someone, a mayor, is going to come out in favor of a particular, or rather than in opposition to half of the city come out and...
Alder Ryan, you're breaking up a little bit.
He's broken up.
He's, yeah, okay. Okay, I guess I will call him myself, and then when Alder Ryan gets reconnected, we'll call him. I guess, yeah, two things, I mean, like, I can see a situation where it might be useful to have a sunset, where it gets kind of renewed yearly or something like that. I mean, part of the issue, you know, or it expires automatically after a year, and then people, I mean, I'm open to criticism and feedback, and if, you know, I don't, I don't think I'm going to go completely off the rails, but nobody thinks that, right? And so, you know, if I had said something, or, you know, advocated for something that the city didn't agree with, you know, then it could come back to the council and say, wait. I mean, the part of the issue, too, is that the PSC tends to open for comments in a somewhat shortened time window, you know, a month or less, and so it could be hard to get on the agenda. For example, there's two items that I would like to comment on. One would be in favor of the Alliant Energies, basically, their solar farm facilities that they plan on building out, and that's due this week. And then there's a second one, which is an appeal of the denial of the Eagle Point Solar Project. And basically, this is a consistent, in line with what the League of Wisconsin Municipalities is advocating for as well, and in support of the appeal. Basically, without getting into it too much, Alliant Energies denied a project by the City of Milwaukee, and it's being appealed to the PSC, and that's also due this week. So, I mean, that's kind of the issue, and I guess those are the two ones that I have off the top of my head. So I think, you know, if we waited, you know, to the next council meeting, we wouldn't be able to weigh in on those, and those are, I think, both on behalf of good solar projects. But Alder Ryan, did you have, you kind of cut out in the middle there, so did you have...
I don't think the internet liked my comments. I don't know what was heard and what wasn't heard, I just was, I guess my point was that we kind of had the same discussion during the task force meeting, in that, I think at the end of the day, we felt like the risk was pretty minimal, and that, you know, a future mayor potentially would say nothing rather than something in favor of a sustainability issue, so that was all.
Alder, comment?
To Evan's point, I would like a clarification on, I guess, parliamentary procedure in terms of council members not being able to put anything on agendas. Is that factual? Or my understanding was that if two Alders made a request, that you could put an agenda item on? Is that not the case? Whether it's a resolution or not?
Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, I'm looking right now, with the actual ordinance wording says.
Because there's two, two Alders can call for a special meeting, and it seems weird that you'd be able to call for a special meeting but not to put something on a regular meeting, because, I mean, I could see that if there's a standoff between the council and the mayor, things getting incredibly awkward. But ordinances don't always make sense either, so... In the meantime, though, Alder Journey? Nope, you are muted.
If we go through with the resolution, so any actions that you take, if we could have the caveat in there, that you would come back with a report to the council as to the actions that were taken and the rationale behind it?
Yeah, absolutely. I would be 100% on board with that, as part of the resolution or informally, whatever people feel comfortable with. Alder Posey?
I clarify, I'm just keep reading this over and over again about, is it definitively the mayor who would be the person designated? Because it does appear when I'm reading it that it says one person is designated. So I think, you know, as we're talking about this, we're talking about it as being the mayor, but is it a, I mean, I pretty much agree with everything Alder Touche said earlier, was what went through my mind and clearly other people's minds as this came up. So if you're saying it's the mayor who's going to be the one answering, and that's how we're having this discussion, it might not be. Is it, who are we giving the power to, to be the person who's going and doing this? Is it, who are we giving the power to, to be the person who's going and doing this? Because that's not what we're necessarily even saying here.
Mr. Sayer?
The last item on there says, now therefore be resolved, the common council of the city of Verona authorizes the city of Verona mayor to file public comments behalf of the city in support of the renewal energy projects, other dockets before the commission, that further the goals of the 2019 Sustainability Resolution. So it would be the mayor.
Were you able to find Alder Cronin's question?
I'm looking for the language here, as we're still...
All right, Alder Touche. You know, if it's something that can be named yearly, like committee positions, that's at least gives us a year opportunity to do a reset, or at least proposed, and then the council votes on it. I mean, I'm trying to find the middle ground here that, that makes sense and gives it an opportunity to get reset. Luke, I'm comfortable to say it's your, you're going to make, so I'm just trying to, in essence, future-proof this a little bit and make it efficient, yet not permanent. Thank you.
Mr. Sayer?
So I'm not finding explicit language, but I mean, obviously, there's, there's the ability under comments from elected officials, you could, you could request to have something placed on a future agenda. That's typically where some of these items sometimes come from. So if there was an item as a comment, that you, somebody could make a request to have this put on a future agenda, or anything else, you can always make that request in a meeting. We also have the kind of the committee process here, so it could potentially, could potentially come on one of those committees as, as the chair of that committee, or so on out of that process as well, too. I'm not finding the language I was hoping to find as I was looking here, but there are ways of getting things onto the agenda. It may not be directly on there if you made a request immediately, because in one, it may have to be requested at, assuming the mayor wouldn't grant it, you may have to request it as a formality through a committee or request it as part of, as part of like an Alder comment period. I think Alder Touche's concerns here tonight, you could add, and we could bring this back at the next meeting, you could add some language here, establish this as a yearly appointment basis. If there was concern about doing that, you could do that as well as part of this resolution.
Yeah, oral zone amendment right now, and then we could get it done, and then I could hopefully comment on the two big items that are this week. I just, yeah, to my understanding, in line, in answer to what Alder Cronin said, is my understanding is similar to Alder Touche's, is that basically the agenda is set by the mayor. I think if it came through a committee, I think it would more or less have to be placed on the agenda just because, but it's, it's one of those things, if, and Alder wanted to discuss something and they weren't chair of the relevant committee, my understanding, and I would never do this, but my understanding is the mayor could just keep it off the agenda. So even if the council would pass it, even if the public was in favor of it, you know, the mayor's just like, nah, then we just don't talk about it. And like, I don't want to, I don't want to be mayor like that. So like, if people have requested things, and I'm not like, well, you have to do, no, just, just talk to me, we'll figure out whatever the process is to get it on the agenda. But it does seem, like, the mayor has a lot of discretion, to the point where they could just shut down debate on something, which I don't, I don't think is right. Anyway, discussion on the resolution before the body, or potential amendments, or other
Alder.
Thank you. I just think that it, I'll, I'll vote for it whether we add that timeframe amendment or, yeah, amendment or not, because every single item basically says that the person, mayor, can further the goals of the 2019 Sustainability Resolution. So it would either be a comment that does that, or they wouldn't be making a comment at all. So I'm comfortable with it as is, but could vote yes with an amendment added.
Alder Touche.
Okay, I want to take a swing at this, and I'm going to need help with some wording of others from Mr. Sayer, Mr. Temp, or anyone else in the council. All right, I'm going to make a motion to amend this resolution. And I don't have it, the tab open right in front of me with the right wording, but something to the fact of that it's, geez, man, this is killing me, that the council appoints a person to represent the city for these comments, and gets reappointed, I don't know, what do we call the time of year after elections? Once a year, I guess, is generic enough, and then that can be the time.
You could say post-election, a week following the spring, you know?
The council organizational meeting.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Because that's every year, yep.
Yeah, and you want that meeting?
I would like to amend it to be that. Thank you. That's my motion.
Is, do you have the motion clear before I ask for a second?
No, hold on.
Okay.
So, so we need to either add this as a, probably not a whereas, but now therefore clause, I can break that into possibly two separate, I'm just talking out loud here, break that into two separate clauses, and then that would basically read that the council shall appoint a person to provide comment and PSC items at the, yearly or annually at the council organizational meeting, something like that? That's the intent of it. Okay, we'll do something, we'll craft that to meet the intent, and it won't be exactly like that, it won't be exactly like Alder Touche. I'll follow up with the city attorney as well and make sure we get the language correct, but we'll get it in there.
So then, I would, I would still be included as the person, the designate for this year until the organizational meeting, and then the council would...
Yeah, I think you'd want, I think you'd want to do this, and you could do it again, reappoint whoever on April 20th, or meet in a month or two from now.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Alder Reek.
Oh, I was just going to propose that maybe it be just added to the existing now therefore be it resolved statement with like a comma after mayor at the organizational meeting or something like that, just to keep it more simple.
Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, we'll, we'll wordsmith that, but the intent is going to be that this person, Mayor Diaz for now, is the person who's appointed to that. At the organizational meeting, this person will be potentially reappointed, it could be Mayor Diaz or whoever it might be at that point. I think that's the intent of it, and that every year that's, is one of the appointments. I guess that's, we'll figure it out. If we got, yeah, we'll figure it out. But as, the point is, as I write out, Luke is the person, we'll figure out the exact wording of how this has to be written, and then if we have to come back and tweak something again, we'll, we'll do that. But I think the intent here is Luke is the person for sure, and we'll, we'll get the language as what you said.
Great. Okay. We are discussing the amendment to the main motion. Questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment as proposed by Alder Touche and as will be crafted by Mr. Sayer, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that amendment passes. Now we are back to the main resolution, 21-008. Alder Touche.
I'm making a motion to approve that resolution.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was already a motion from Alder...
Alder Ryan. Did you get a second? I'll second it.
Who was that seconded by? Do you have it in your notes, Mr. Sayer?
No, I don't have it, unfortunately.
Okay.
We have the tape, so I know.
Oh, it was, I believe it was Alder Kim. I can have it in my notes. So, but we have it, we have it video recorded, so I think we're good. So back to the main resolution. Questions or comments on resolution 21-008? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 21-008 as amended, which establishes a city designate to comment on dockets before the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. And just to clarify, I will provide an update on the two comments during the next council meeting. And with that, we'll, oh, sorry, anything further from the Sustainability Task Force?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to item 11, adjournment. A motion to adjourn. Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Reek. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And we are adjourned at 8:36 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.